We'll call, please.
Here.
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 And we have a forum. First item for discussion this morning is Public Improvement 5337 and 5338. And we'll call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Hey, good morning, your honor and members. The memo before you is in regards to Public Improvement 5337. This is a 2021 mill milliner improvement project. We city staff, we've completed the project plans and specifications for this annual project. I just want to note the streets that we're looking at are resurfacing are Vernon, Oak Street to Union, Vass Avenue from Vine Street to Union, and Vine Street Vernon to Elcott. The estimated cost of construction is $209,000. Therefore, we must publicly advertise for this project for a minimum of 10 days. We've tentatively set the bid schedule for June 29th this upcoming month. If we receive favorable bid prices, we'll look and evaluate to add additional street segments to the project and provide a recommendation to this council similar to in the past. So at this time, I'm requesting to accept the project plans and specifications and authorize the advertisement for bids.
Thank you, Brian.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thanks Caroline. Any questions? Scott.
I wondered if, as you look for additional areas to maybe add if the bid prices come in, as you go further down west on Vernon Avenue, it seems like that road is, would be a good candidate.
Yes, I agree. We will.
Any other questions for our city engineer? Now we have a motion to bring this to the council Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries. Item number two is Public Improvement 9768, which is the Downtown Riverfront Balcony and Bank Enhancement Stabilization Project Phase One. And again, we'll call on Brian Uvaro.
Thank you, your honor. Yes, Downtown Riverfront Phase One, we held the, we ordered the construction contract on May 3rd to Comstock Construction. The pre-construction meeting took place on Thursday, May 27th last week. Comstock intends starting the marketplace foundation and some of the prep work prior to getting, while securing all the bonds for this project. Since the pre-construction meeting, Bolton Inc. and city staff, we begin contacting the local residents and looking to provide updates for this project here. Just want to note the groundbreaking is today at 11:00 a.m. For this project, it'll be held on the West Block. The next step with this project is to accept Bolton Inc.'s professional services agreement for the construction administration observation. They propose an hourly rate not to exceed fee estimated at $640,000. This fee includes the contract administration observation, special inspection requirements by Braun, construction staking, and architectural services by subconsultant EAPC. Depending on how the Union Avenue resurfacing project goes, we're looking to do some cost share with both these projects if the happen, if construction happens to occur at the same time. This cost was introduced at the award presentation conducted at May 3rd. So these fees was already incorporated into what was presented to the council previously. So at this time, your honor, I'm requesting to accept Bolton Inc.'s professional services agreement and the not exceed amount of $640,000.
Thank you, Brian. And we can bring this to the council.
I'll offer that.
Thank you.
I want to ask a question.
Sure. Second to the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Justin. Go ahead, Anthony.
How much have we actually paid Bolton Inc. in this? Seems like a lot of money so far.
I don't have, we did some reviews prior to the award of what was approved on the design development and through construction administration, and we were just, we were under the amounts of the fees thus far. I don't have those numbers in front of me right now.
Could you let us know how much that portion is?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion to bring this to the council. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign.
Aye.
That motion carries. Back to item number one, I believe, Brian, you did, we still need to take care of Public Improvement 5338.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, they're similar to the mill milliner. We've substantially completed project plans and specifications. We're proposing with the Seal Code Project, Public Improvement 5338. We're looking to Seal Code Summit Avenue from Union to Fireburg, Cascade Street from Summit to Trunk Highway 210, and then Elcott from West Side Drive to Union Avenue. I just want to note in 2016, these streets were either resurfaced or reconstructed in conjunction with Otter Tail County prior to the jurisdictional transfer. The estimated cost for this, construction cost is $186,000. Therefore, we must publicly advertise for a minimum of 10 days. The bid opening is tentatively scheduled for June 29th for this work. We anticipate this work could be, will be completed this fall. As noted, we budget $129,600 for this type of work. This budget amount includes engineering staff time and project contingencies. So we'll be looking to supplement the remaining portions of this cost through general MSA based on the estimated cost at this time. So I'm requesting to accept the project plans and specifications and authorization to submit bids for Public Improvement 5338.
Thank you, Brian. And we can.
I'll offer that, your honor.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thanks, Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And next, we'll call on Chief Mukow for our mutual aid joint fire department cooperative agreement. Good morning, chief.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So I come to you this morning looking for you guys' approval to renew our joint cooperative agreement with the city of Morehead, otherwise just known as mutual aid. We've had it in place for the last 15 years, and we've recently looked through it and got it updated with the most significant change is the addition of a fee schedule, which falls in line with our fee schedule that we have listed for our fire department. And that would apply, for instance, that are six hours or more, which is pretty standard. The one that we have in place for Otter Tail County is four hours or more, but we look at the distance between our communities that we give each other that one hour of travel time both directions. So really, that was the only change that we had seen to make. And just by the numbers, over our last 15-year period, we've responded to Morehead three times, two result, or the result of flooding, and then one was a canceled en route call. We have yet to have them come here. However, it's a wonderful practice to have mutual aid agreements in place for our operation and for the neighbors around us.
Just for the public, chief, we have mutual aid agreements with Otter Tail County as a whole, and then Morehead. Anyone, any other areas we have aid agreements with?
Yeah, great question. Detroit Lakes, Alexandria, a couple of departments down in Grant County, Elba Lake, Wendell, Breckenridge. So I mean, I think we're up to about 22 or 23 different fire departments that we have mutual aid with. Obviously, our most common ones are our close ring of partners, Elizabeth Underwood Dalton. However, there's been incidents here in Fergus, if you guys recall, over the years that, you know, we've called on every fire department in Otter Tail County to come and assist us in some form or fashion.
All right. Thanks, chief. Any other questions? Someone like to offer this?
Hello, your honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Brent. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, chief. Item number four is a equipment purchase, and we'll call on our finance director, Bill Sawmore. Morning, Bill.
Thank you. Good morning. Before you is a purchase of a street sweeper. We need to replace unit number 259. That is a 2009 street sweeper with 7,557 hours on it. So we'd want you to declare that surplus would be one, so we could trade that in on this new purchase of a regenerative air Timco Sweeper Model 500X. And then also authorizing the budget increase to $750,000 for the equipment fund for this year. And I'll explain that a little bit in just a minute. But if you jump down to the budgetary impact, so the purchase price of this street sweeper is $302,965. So these are expensive pieces of machinery, but certainly important to keep our streets clean as well as keep all this debris out of the stormwater system. The trade-in for that will be $55,000 for unit 259. So the out-of-pocket will be $247,965. And then the motor vehicle tax will go on top of that in addition when, after we receive that and go register that ourselves. This comes out of the 2021 equipment fund budget that we planned for. So as we put that budget together, we kind of usually come up with, we'll use the amount of depreciation for the year and then any profit we've built in. So kind of maintaining that cash balance. The cash balance has grown some in that equipment fund over the last few years. We had a little bit of underspending a couple of years ago. And then last year, 2020, we had ordered a refuse truck that didn't arrive until this year in 2021. So when I look at the history of the equipment fund in the current year, we have a garbage truck that really is coming out of last year's allotment. Now, when we talk about this budget adjustment, there's really not a line item for that in that budget because the equipment fund is treated like an enterprise fund. So full accrual accounting, those assets go on in that fund. Maybe more than you want to know this early in the morning on that. But I wanted to point out, we'll actually have more spent out of there this year than was planned because of that first garbage truck that's really from last year that was ordered, just didn't get here in time. So I am comfortable with that, with Guy using that amount of budget from last year. And then when we purchased this street sweeper, it pretty much exhausts what we were planning this year of $670,000 is what we were looking at, which we actually pulled back. And just to give you a little comparison, last year, we were planning on $795,000, but of course, when we were in COVID, didn't know where LGA was going, where the, kind of the state of affairs was going to be, we said, let's hold back a bit. Well, we're more comfortable to bump that back up some. So when Guy and I looked over the fund, moving that to 750, so we're still not back even to that 2020 level. So wanted to give you some comfort and assurance on that of when we say raising that budget, it's allowing them to purchase a little bit more out of that equipment fund. So that's our recommendations. And if you have any questions, I hope they're not too tough, as I don't know a lot about street sweepers, so.
Bill, did we move that money from last year into this year?
Yes. It stays in the fund. Because that equipment fund is a separate fund, that cash is not commingled with, you know, other departments. So in essence, it stayed there. The cash balance just grew. February, we got that garbage truck, drew that down, and then kind of from there started the 2021 planned purchases, so.
Any other questions for Bill? We can recommend this to the council with a motion.
I'll make them, your honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you, Brent. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next up is our annual report from our library. And we'll say good morning to Gail Headstrom. Good morning, Gail.
Good morning. Thank you. I did put some handouts at your seats. Some of you may not have everything, and I can get that to you in the future. I just ran out. Miscounted, so I'll get you some additional information if you need it. But mayor and council members, I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share with you some information regarding the Fergus Falls Public Library's 2020 annual report, which was filed with the state in April. And I'll also share a bit of our vision for summer and fall at the library. First, I want to thank all of the city employees for their ongoing support that they provided the library during the pandemic. Their expertise and professionalism truly helped each department to navigate the complexities of 2020. From March 16th of 2020 until now, the library was closed for only two weeks. And I hesitate to say we were closed even then because during those first two weeks of mandatory shutdown, employees worked from home creating virtual content online, and we had reference questions forwarded to library staff's homes so that they could respond to patrons' needs. For two and a half months, we provided solely contactless service, which meant that we checked everything out for the patron and brought it outside for them. And we also had our digital collections available, of course. So with adherence to public health guidance and following best practices, we were able to open last June to the public with limited hours and limited visitors. And by August of 2020, we felt things were seeming pretty normal for us despite a lot of safety precautions being in place. So the pandemic allowed all of us to see the inequities, inequities, excuse me, caused by a lack of broadband internet. And librarians know how imperative it is for patrons to have this access. This year, that access allowed students to get an education and people to earn a paycheck. While library computers are always used robustly, every day during the past year, we've seen that use expand in ways we could not have foreseen. Daily, people have been accessing our computers, laptops, microphones, and webcams and scheduling meeting rooms so that they can attend mandatory court proceedings, meet with psychologists and counselors, consult with attorneys, participate in telemedicine meetings, family gatherings, worship services, and stream funerals of friends and family. So the internet truly does provide a new level of connectivity for people. For more information on how the library operated during the pandemic, I want to encourage you to visit the library's YouTube channel. We have a video called "We're Here For You," where the employees share their perspectives of working at the library during the pandemic. Ariel McCune was the videographer for that project, and she did a remarkable job. So I encourage you to check that out. You'll also find her other online content there as well. You each received an infographic highlighting some of the data from the annual report. And if you're interested in more detailed information, I have a paper copy, of course, that you can have access to. And all of that information, I think going back to at least 2013, can be found on the Minnesota Department of Education webpage. So if you're interested, you can also compare, you can compare different libraries because all of the reports are filed there. So it's interesting data. And as you can imagine, due to the pandemic, our statistics varied significantly from the previous year. And yet declines in some areas, such as physical circulation, were tempered by significant increases in checkout of digital materials. While patron visits, you know, were a decrease of almost 50%, the decrease in circulation was only about 25% because people were using more of our downloadable audios, videos, and materials. So we will weather that. Reference requests declined only 11%, and I think, again, that's because we could provide those remotely and from home. Our programming migrated to an online format. We saw robust participation in our virtual programs, and we had people participate in book groups from other countries, which we wouldn't have been able to achieve if we'd been solely in person. So now, as we enter into the summer, the programming for the youngest patrons will remain online. Children grades four and up will have both in-person and virtual programming opportunities. Adult programming will primarily be in the library with a hybrid option for those who can't make it in. And we did have some previously scheduled virtual programs, and those will stay in that format. So we're now checking out bicycles for the season, and we're going to be adding a vinyl record collection and putting in a listening station. And we had some pretty large donations of both vinyl and a financial contribution towards that project. So you can look forward to that. We'll probably add a disco ball, just, you know, for good measure. And through a grant from the DNR, we are going to be checking out passes to Minnesota State Parks. That will begin next week, and it will go through July of 2022. For 17 years, the Fergus Falls Public Library has offered a free reading tutoring program each summer. We do this for eight weeks. So as of now, we've hired five reading tutors, and they will work with students for a half an hour each week for eight weeks. We traditionally have had 72 tutoring slots available. We pay for license. We now have 78 licensed paid for because the numbers have increased. We have a waiting list of over 10 children trying to get into that program. And I should note that that program is funded with donations and grants and support from the Friends of the Library. So we are committed to continuing on with that program to make sure we are growing strong readers who will become engaged citizens in the future. In 2021, you're going to see, and 2022, you're going to see an increase in online content, hybrid meeting options. The library is going to be more out into the community. We're going to be collaborating with local partners such as the Prairie Wetland Learning Center, where we're going to install a story walk next week. And we'll have monthly participation in the farmer's market. We're going to be at Summerfest, where we will be having mini golf. And if you would like to volunteer with that, see me after the meeting. There's a little bit of heavy lifting involved, so I'm looking for some help. And we're excited to announce that the library will have expanded Saturday hours. We will be made open until 4:00 p.m. during the fall and winter months, so from October to March. So we know our patrons are looking forward to that. So I appreciate your time today, and I welcome any questions you have. And of course, you're always welcome to stop by the library should you have additional questions or are just looking for a good book. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. What questions? Does anyone have of Gail? Just as always, Gail, thanks to you and your staff. I know that one thing you didn't mention, but this on the infograph is you eliminated the late fees over the last year, which is, I think, just really important, just to recognize the access to the families and.
It's really made a huge difference. I'm glad that you pointed that out. And it's been happening all across the nation, and it became really intuitive during the pandemic that when you shut your book returns, you can't possibly charge people late fees. But more and more libraries have gone away with late fees. The most recent ones I read about were Boston Public, you know, pretty big library. But what we know, that regardless of the size of your library and your budget, fines were equating about 1% of a library's budget. So we definitely know that we can find ways to make that up or save, you know, cut back in our expenses to make that a reality. So yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
And you also mentioned the online, or the tutoring requests up from 72 to 78. Is that something you're seeing because of the at-home learning? Is that an increase, do you think?
You know, I think it, I think it is definitely related to that. I think a lot of people are recognizing that they would like a little extra help for their students this summer. I should also mention that this year, we also will have one tutor working one day a week at Kids Camp. So for families who can, you know, get it scheduled at the library because of their schedules, we will have someone that is working with kids too. So, but yeah, you're right. I think the past two years of education have presented a lot of challenges for learning. So.
Sure. Thank you, Gail.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Andrew?
Yeah, your honor, thank you. I just want to mention one thing. First of all, thanks to Gail and her staff for doing such a great job at the public library. They're always impressive, and we're so pleased with how they ran things throughout the pandemic. One thing I did want to acknowledge was the library staff were really key at the beginning of the pandemic in the effort of keeping the food shelf open. So on top of running a library successfully, they were really key to that few months period where the city was ensuring that those resources and services remained. And it wouldn't have been possible without the help of staff from the library. So just wanted to give a special thanks to them and acknowledge that they went above and beyond, given the circumstances.
Sure, thanks, Andrew, and thanks, thanks, Gail and your staff. Thank you. All right, item number six, this is a discussion on the Greater Fergus Falls contract, and we'll call on council member Caroline Gustafson and Krista Hagberg. Go ahead, Caroline.
All right. So over the last couple of months, Krista Hagberg and Jasmine Sawmore and Rebecca Peterson from Greater Fergus Falls have met multiple times to discuss the contract and go back and forth a little bit. Within that timeframe, there was a transition at Greater Fergus Falls. So we're presenting it here now. And within the contract, the biggest, the biggest thing we want to bring forward is that last line in there, that it's an appropriation of city dollars. It's not grant money. It's appropriation of city dollars that will be used to be dedicated to economic development services for the city of Fergus Falls. The rest of it's, you know, the statute information, but we just wanted to make sure that the city dollars are being used to promote economic development within the city of Fergus Falls. And then the memorandum piece itself, Clara and Nataya will be working through that. They know what will work best for them to continue this good working relationship going forward. So Krista, did you have anything else?
No, and the verbiage, you mentioned grant. We wanted it to go from donation to appropriation, just so that verbiage was very clear.
Sure. Thank you, Krista. Thank you, Caroline. Andrew, did you have anything to add? Or Clara? No? Questions from the council?
On the back of this, it mentions that, obviously, it's truly a partnership and recommended that city staff in Greater Fergus Falls create a memorandum of understanding together with a joint working session. I kind of think that we shouldn't be signing a contract until that memorandum of understanding has been identified. I mean, that would be like saying, I'm going to buy a house, but you've never seen it. I mean, I think you, we shouldn't be signing something that is open-ended. I would also like to see that, you know, where the payments are made in quarterly. I think that should be written down. And also the fact that they should maintain an office in Fergus. Just, those are details, but it's, the devil's always in the details. As this reads, on the first of the month, on the first of the year, they would get $50,000. And from Bill's perspective, you know, that helps our cash flow to break it out. I know you can, you can butcher it accordingly, but I also think it maintains the relationship with them. And I think we've had enough kind of, enough anomalies in how they interpret the contract and how we interpret the contract that some things need to be spelled out a little bit more than they are.
And quarterly is currently how we are making those payments. So that's certainly fine to add quarterly in there.
Thanks. So we have, we should get a recommendation to move this to the council, and then we'll have, we can have a discussion. Caroline, would you like to move this contract?
Yeah.
The contract to the council? Krista?
I'll second to bring it. Yep.
And then Anthony has his comments. So we'll bring this to the council for consideration on Monday night. And at that time, I think that if any changes to that contract want to be presented, delays or any.
I have to be in Omaha on Monday night. But, I mean, I just don't think you should sign a contract that's still not complete. I mean, I don't think anybody in their right mind would never sign. It's like giving somebody a blank check. You would never do it. So why would you give a contract without the detail in it? And the other part is, it's like, you know, how many meetings do you need to decide what you want? You know, I mean, you've been meeting, it's, you know, we just meet and meet and meet and meet, and we never make a decision. So I think a memorandum of understanding shouldn't take that long. We give them $50,000, you know, they provide a service. It's not, it's not complicated.
Sure. Thanks, Anthony. Other questions, comments on this? So we move this for this, oh, yes, go ahead, Scott.
Well, I guess I maybe could direct the question to Anthony. And if the questions have to do with a memo of understanding that in effect become part of the contract, why doesn't just get written into the contract? Why does it have to be even a separate document? And maybe there's something about the process that I just need a better explanation.
Yeah. So I think the discussion that we had and why there is a memorandum is things morph and change over time, and just making sure that the memorandum was in discussion because we want to make sure that there's a good working relationship. And if there's something in the contract that doesn't necessarily work a year from now, we want them to have the freedom to work through that together to continue projects forward. So we didn't want to give them a whole list of rules that they had to follow in case they need to make a decision and keep projects moving forward. So that's kind of where the memorandum was coming from, right, Krista?
Yeah, definitely.
And I think also, I think, to Anthony's point, I agree, I think we're overcomplicating this, in my opinion. I think that it's $50,000 of upwards of $300,000 budget. The whole purpose of Greater Fergus Falls was for the city to leverage our dollars with the community dollars for economic development. I think that we're doing that. For us to think that we're going to micromanage that budget with our $50,000 is unrealistic, and it shows a degree, it shows a lack of trust, in my opinion. So I think that the concept, if people don't agree with the concept of Greater Fergus Falls, that's one thing, but I don't think we're going to micromanage their budget and their professional expertise with our contracts. I think we've done that enough. I think, I appreciate the work that Krista and Caroline have done, and I think we entered in a contract. We say that our $50,000 is a contribution towards the economic development efforts of that organization. I mean, we go from there. So that's my opinion. But we have a contract here that we'll present to the council on Monday night. And I guess we can discuss any changes that people want to see then. All in favor of that motion to bring this to the council on Monday night?
Aye.
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 Pose same sign. That motion carries. Item number seven is an RTC Phase Two billion dollars update, and we'll call on Anthony Bremseth. Good morning, Anthony.
Andrew Bremseth, city administrator. Big shoes to fill this.
Morning, Andrew.
Good morning, your honor. Good morning, Your Honor. Thank you, committee members. We're not looking for action today, but just wanted to start a discussion with the council and maybe get some direction from all of you as it relates to the remaining state bonding dollars we have from the 2018 legislative session related to the RTC. As you recall, during that legislative session, we were awarded $3.5 million through the bonding bill directly for use at the RTC campus. These funds are anticipated to be in place until the end of next year, so December 31, 2022. And we wanted to point out the bonding language that was approved. Some of you may recall that the last line, which is really where I'm going to focus my attention, was added as a negotiation in the 11th hour to be able to get these funds. Some of the legislators were hung up on the potential for the funding at the time to be used to demolish part of that horse shape, the U-shaped structure up at the campus. So this is the exact language that was approved through the legislative process. "For a grant to the city of Fergus Falls for phases two and three of the deconstruction of the former regional treatment center campus to prepare the site for public use, redevelopment and historic preservation purposes. This appropriation includes money for demolition of all or portions of buildings and other structures deemed unnecessary or undesirable for redevelopment or renovation, removal of debris, site preparation and remediation, hazardous material abatement, and improvements for building envelope and structural integrity to stabilize existing buildings and structures for redevelopment or renovation. This demolition is part of a larger project to redevelop the campus of the regional treatment center." And here's the probably the line that has the most implications for us now. "This appropriation may not be used to demolish the central tower or the U-shaped building connected to the central tower." The demolition project we did two summers ago now, I suppose, removed all of the buildings, with the exception of the Memorial Building and the Morton Building that the city currently uses behind the U-shaped building. So really, did what we could in terms of reducing the footprint and demolition, which was the direction at the time. We have expended 1.7 million of the 3.5 million. We did exhaust the Phase One grant dollars as well as part of the Phase One and Two demolition. And so the balance of funds between now and the end of next year is $1,721,441. And so we would like the council to begin a discussion as to how they want to use these remaining bond funds with these guidelines in mind, knowing that further demolition is likely not going to be allowed.
What was that number, 1.7? Okay. Sorry.
Nope, that's no problem. So we're just looking to start a discussion, see how the council wants to handle these funds. I know Councilmember Kwame may have some thoughts because as part of the master planning process, which is underway and which he's a key member of, they've begun to discuss ways to potentially use these funds to put the facility in position to further be redeveloped and to provide for further preservation. So maybe I'll, maybe he wants to kick off the discussion, but I suppose, as a whole, we'd like the council to start discussing this, get it on their radar, because time will be tight, knowing that the end of next year is going to be here. So just looking for some direction.
Thank you, Andrew. Scott, did you want to speak to that this morning? Do we want to set up a?
I can just give you a couple of
Sure.
points to bring people up to speed, so to speak.
And then maybe it would make sense to schedule something, like give the council an opportunity to digest and have a little bit of a discussion at a meeting or a work session or whatever, you know, people think is appropriate. But go ahead, Scott.
And I think that's fair and probably a good approach. The Master Plan Committee, of which I'm a part, has had a couple of meetings. We were given a presentation back in late January or February, I believe, of just an update at that point where it was a Zoom meeting, and we got a, just kind of a taste of what they were expecting this report to include. They've been doing work in the background through this time period, and actually now, just within the last couple of weeks, a lot of this has all fallen into place. With the goal of trying to have something put together before Summerfest started because of all the traffic and activity that'll be up on the RTC campus during Summerfest, the Master Plan Committee had a conversation that was kind of focused on trying to find and prepare something that would be in the form of a handout. And this is the draft copy of it that I just received last night, frankly, hot off the presses, that hopefully would be something that can be printed up and available for distribution in some manner, you know, during Summerfest, as people are up there, you know, looking around and go by the booths and stuff like that. The gist of it is, the assessment of the physical property there, a little bit of what the viable reuses could be, and then a little taste of what's, you know, what the next steps are. The folks that we hired to do this master planning process were not aware of the fact that the state bonding money was available until fairly recently. Last year, during the whole time of our meetings and conversation, they didn't know it. And I didn't know they didn't know it, and they didn't know they didn't know it. And so a lot of what they were working on was just assuming that we were working with an empty pocketbook for trying to do anything that we would maybe be interested in doing now. So once they learned that we had the possibility to, you know, perhaps spend as much as $1.5 million on immediate needs, they got very excited about it as to how this could really set us up for a redevelopment and renovation, you know, given the ability to use that well. So I asked for a list from them as to what, to some degree of prioritization, what would be the best ways to start to look at how to use that money. And not surprisingly, the first thing on the list was roof repairs. The building, as they looked it over, is structurally sound and is in really pretty good shape. That's their words. It's in really pretty good shape. And there's a very clear road to reuse specifically for housing that they go through quite a lot of detail as to how that might be approached. There were lots of different, there have been many, many different ideas suggested as to how it could be developed for this, that, or the other thing. And their 172-page report, which I did not print and bring here today, goes into a lot more detail on that. But what it boils down to is that housing is the best, most likely reuse for the building. It's in a very good position to be used that way, and it matches with what the Otter Tail County needs are. And so the fact that the building is structurally sound, that's in good shape and in a good position for redevelopment, and then now with some money available to possibly address some of the maintenance issues that need to be done, it could really be a fantastic situation that we could find ourselves in. But again, the list that they suggested, you know, as you're talking about what we might do with this money, there's 14 items. I'll just read through them real quick, just to give you an idea, and then I'll shut up. But the roof and flashing repairs, first on the list, specifically and most significantly needed is a west detached flat roof in the areas around there. And then scattered repairs throughout in various spots here and there. Work to reduce groundwater infiltration across the site, installation of active dehumidification in the lower levels, isolated structural repairs in the west detached roof area, passive venting of upper levels for dehumidification, boarding up the first level windows for security and maintenance of the significance historical materials, life safety concerns, especially clearing and unlocking all the stairwells and providing appropriate secure exit hardware. The comment there was, when they were doing the building tour, they discovered many doors that were either locked and the locks wouldn't open, or even if they wouldn't turn, the doors themselves were just seized up. And so the ability to be able to have people moving through the building in a safe way, the stairwells need to be accessible and clear. Not, and this would be an area that wouldn't cost a lot of money, but it was something that was high on the list because of the fact it was a life safety question. They recommended installing and monitoring an alarm system. And I believe we do have some monitoring already in place up there, and I think they just aren't aware of what we may already have. Mold abatement in the lower levels specifically to try and address air quality questions. Securing and protecting selected historical elements, which might mean sectioning off areas so that there's a little bit better restrictions for access. Debris removal, such as ceiling tile, carpeting, and light fixtures. There's quite a lot of just odds and ends in there that, again, wouldn't be a terribly expensive thing to do, but could clean up the interior and make it appear a lot better. And then the last few things, tuck pointing, there's clearly a need for that. The glass block, there's a lot of windows that were replaced over time with this glass block. That's a modern thing. That's not historical. And then there's some porches that have this patio-style block that is just open holes, you know, that were on these places like the smoking porches. That's modern and not historical, and that could be removed. And then those spiral slide fire escapes, they look like just steel silos on the sides of the building, could probably be removed. And then the block, the window areas where those were put in could be repaired. So there's just a few of the things. There's certainly other things that others might suggest. But that $1.5 million or so dollars that's available could probably go a long way on some of these items and would set us up for a real good renovation redevelopment plan.
And when is, just remind us, when is that 172 pages? Is that the final report? Is it, what's the timeline on your committee's work?
I think it's July. So within the next two months at the most, as I understand it. It's in its final draft form right now.
Sure. So maybe it makes sense.
Our next meeting is day after tomorrow, so.
Okay. So maybe it makes sense to allow your committee to finish its work, have staff schedule something to bring to the council at that time, have discussion about, you know, the next steps, what are the council's wishes?
I think that's reasonable. And then as we're looking ahead, it seems, the thing that I don't know, and maybe Bill can help answer this question, is if we were going to even try and address some of these things this fall, it has to get, you know, paid for and go through the budget system and all that. And then also, as we looked at the capital improvement plan, if any of these things, you know, if we're going to spend money on any of these things, it still goes through, and I wonder if it has to be included in the CIP or not. Those, those aspects of how the money is handled and whether it's in the plan or not in the plan, or whether we do it, you know, as part of the plan or outside of it, that's the part I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah. It certainly wouldn't have to be included in the capital improvement plan. You know, things come up all the time that it would be in your authority, as long as there are eligible costs under the legislation. That's, you know, the most important, that we make sure they're eligible under that. They wouldn't have to go through the CIP planning process in order to get done, so.
Okay. Well, that's a good update. Maybe it's a good opportunity for that committee to finish its work and then work with staff to come back and schedule a time that we can have a little deeper discussion with the information for, not only from the committee, but from staff and those bonding dollars and make a decision of what, if, or anything we do. Jim, go ahead.
Are we able to wait the two months? I mean, we only have just a little over a year to spend that money. And finding people out there to do these type things, everybody's busy right now. So I think we need to move on it sooner than later, personally. That's my feeling.
Could we ask staff to look at that and see if?
Yeah, you know, Your Honor.
Yeah, we also, I just would caution, we don't want to just start throwing, just because we have state funding, if there's things, you know, to stabilize a roof that needs to be replaced, you know what I mean? I don't think we want to just throw money at the thing either. I think we want to do it wisely. We'd all agree on that, so.
Yeah, Your Honor, a few, a few thoughts. Yeah, I mean, the time will become of the essence, I think, as we get closer. But the nice thing is, if this is the direction the council wants to go, a lot of those projects that he mentioned would be inside. And so there'd be opportunities, I think, to maybe expand the building season a little bit, if they're able to heat certain portions, you know, on their own to allow that to happen. So I, we'll be fine, I think, probably either way. But I don't think we want to delay if this is truly the intent. The other thing, I would, you know, I'd be permissive if I didn't state this. If the council's direction is demolition, which it has been, you know, you don't have to spend these dollars. You could go back and try to get the language changed in the next bonding bill, which could be next legislative session, or you could ask for additional funds if that was your goal as well. So I don't, I don't want to lead you down the road that these, these funds have to be spent. But if the direction of the council is to try to preserve the building for redevelopment based on the work in the master plan and that committee, these monies are at your disposal between now and the end of next year. So I just want to be very clear that the council is going to be the one driving the bus from here and, and will respond accordingly.
I think that sounds like a larger discussion.
I do, too.
And this council is doing a good job.
Yeah.
Doing a good job of, of thoughtfully thinking through these things and having rational discussions about them. So I think we should continue along with, with that. So Justin and Brent had comments.
I just, maybe it's more of a question than, than, I think it hasn't been the first idea for redevelopment for, for housing and, and that. But we had a pretty good proposal, correct me if I'm wrong, for housing. And they said the financial analysis just did not work, and the financing did not work. So I'm wondering, I mean, it's a great idea to have it for housing, but if they came forth and had the wherewithal, but financially just did not work out, and the funding didn't come in, I mean, how, or is there something different? Refresh my memory and.
That proposal was heavily dependent on housing tax credits, and they were not aware of those tax credits, which made the project not feasible from, from, from that, from that perspective.
Yeah, the concern was more with the individuals rather than.
So is that funding mechanism, per se, not necessarily the housing? For, for their project to work based on their, their tax credits that they were trying to go after would work?
Yeah. And Minnesota Housing and Finance, for whatever reasons, just did not fund, you know, did not allocate tax credits to that project based on the individual application. They had some issues with their application, I think it's safe to say.
Yeah. I mean, on a high level, I would say limited owner equity, and the state dollars want to be leveraged with other private or owner dollars. So I think, yeah, it just wasn't the right fit for the programs.
Fair enough.
Well, my first question is for Bill. Out of that $40,000 we still had left over from originally for maintenance on the property, we had talked about being able to possibly use until this fund runs out, use their money for that maintenance. Have we been doing that?
No, we haven't been doing much out of this for maintenance. And I don't think we've been doing a whole lot for maintenance right now, because we haven't been spending down that $40,000, just even in the last number of months. Boy, if we've even spent $1,000 or $2,000 out of there. Yeah. But that's, yeah.
And then out of the things that Scott brought up and what you brought up, as far as, you know, if this thing ends up getting torn down, the two of the areas that I would like to see the money spent on, if possible, is going to be some kind of external security on this building because of the amount of damage. I mean, these people breaking in now ain't just breaking in to take pictures. They're taking sledgehammers, breaking through walls because doors are shut and everything else, smashing the glasses in the nurse's station. They're not just going in there and looking around. They're destroying things. And it's becoming a liability as far as somebody getting hurt on that property, because Jim even told me there's a section that's on the top floor, that if they don't know what they're looking for, it drops all the way down into the basement. And between that and sealing up all the main floor windows once and for all, so they cannot get into them, I think is a issue I'd like to see addressed. So the city is going to be reducing their liability on people getting injured on this property until we're able to figure out exactly what we're going to do with it.
Thanks, Brent. So with that, we'll ask that the committee continues work. Staff brings back a recommendation of, or at least an opportunity for the council to discuss and any information that we need at that time.
Yeah, I think we'll schedule a work session, and maybe this will be motivation for that group to wrap up even sooner. Maybe this can light a fire under the consultants to say, hey, let's aim for June rather than July. But nonetheless, we'll work closely with the group that's been working on this, and we'll put together a work session and bring back some options.
I think you folks will be really impressed, frankly, by this report. I mean, this 172, they've, they've really done a thorough job of looking through this thing as to what could work, what might work, what's worked elsewhere, what it would cost, why it would work. I think it's, I think it's going to be a very good report, and you'll be very pleased.
Thanks for your work, and thanks for the work of the committee on that, Scott.
I got one question for Bill, though. Say we were to repair the roof on this thing, and we got hit with a straight-line wind or windstorm, and it ripped half those shingles off the roof. Is that building covered under the city's insurance for the repairs?
It is not. We do not have property insurance on, on that facility right now. We've always had liability. But years ago, the council made a decision, we're not going to put property on there because we wouldn't rebuild the structure. And we have looked at options of how could you, and even working with the League of Minnesota Cities, it's a vacant building that we wouldn't rebuild? building that we wouldn't rebuild. So how do you insure that? And even the league struggles with that. So.
See, that would be my concern, doing all the roof, other than doing some minor patching to keep the water out. That would be my only concern of doing something like that, because we could turn around the next year, and we could have another freak storm runs in and rips it up, and all the money we just spent to try to save it is going to be sitting there now. We're not going to put any money into fixing it.
All right. Thanks, Brent. Thanks, Scott. The staff will look for further discussions on this. And with that, I think that's the last item on the agenda. Just one final time reminder, Across the River, hope everyone can make it eleven o'clock today for the groundbreaking of the Downtown Riverfront project. And with that, have a good day, everyone.